Tuesday, January 14th, City Council Work Session. I need approval of the agenda.
So moved?
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, our first item is the 12 Days of Earth Day festivities. Bruce and Ashley, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll just turn to Ashley.
Ashley?
All right. Good evening. This is Ashley Driscoll, City Attorney's Office. Thank you for allowing me to attend via the phone tonight. I know you have Bill there as well, but this allows me to attend another City Council meeting as well. So I think that this is gonna be a relatively straightforward agenda item. I know that you guys have a lot to tackle this evening. So just as a reminder, last year, we had some discussions about how best to handle the 12 Days of Earth Day celebration. And once the council decided at that time was to approve Resolution 1902, which delegated authority to the Parks and Community Services Committee to sponsor the 12 Days event just for 2019. So we did that last year. What we did is we said, you know, this is an event that's been going on for a while. The city wants to continue to support it. You know, we're gonna delegate authority for just 2019 and revisit it in 2020. So here we are revisiting it 2020. And staff and members of the committee have had some discussions about how best to handle this event and what really we are trying to accomplish with this event. And our recommendation is to make some changes to how the city is handling it, to essentially make it instead of a city-sponsored event with public participation, a city-run event. And having it as a city-run event will have greater control over the message. So, you know, we want traditionally 12 Days event, a conservation-focused event. By making it a city event, we can really control the message. It would be the city speaking. It would be the city, you know, supporting conservation on the North Coast. And then we can invite the public to participate in a way that furthers the city's mission. So instead of, again, a public event that's organized by the city, this is a city event where we invite the public to participate, help further the city's goals. So this is a change in format somewhat for the event. So what we are doing tonight is coming to the council to see if this is a change that makes sense to the council. And if it does, we'll bring back documents at February 11th Works, I'm sorry, yeah, the Public, the Parks and Community Service Committee will review documents at their January 16th meeting and will present at council a February 11th Work Session to discuss those documents. And then, you know, if this all works, a March 3rd Business Meeting vote. And the documents that we would be talking about would be an ordinance to tweak the delegation of authority to the Parks and Community Services Committee to not just sponsor the event, but to have it be a city-run event. And then the City Council Resolution establishing what the mission statement of the event would be. And again, that's furthering, you know, city control over this event. The city's gonna establish what the mission statement is, and then the 12 Days Committee will manifest that mission statement. And then the third document that we'd be prepared is a handbook to help create the policies to guide the program. So that's what I have. Again, the purpose of tonight is to get kind of a head nod from council if this is the direction that you guys would like to head. And if it is, we'll take the steps that I just outlined.
Ashley, I have a question. This is Mike. Question, would the 12 Days of Earth Day Committee be a standing committee of the city?
The committee that would be responsible for the 12 Days would be the Parks and Community Services Committee. So it would be, you know, essentially part of the Parks and Community Service Committee.
Not a, not a separate, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments for Ashley or questions?
There would, Robin here. There, would there be other people involved other than Parks people? Because we've usually had the Seaside Aquarium and different other groups that kind of stand on their own as part of this group. HRAP was one also. So I'm curious if you do have additional people on, included in this group.
So definitely. What the Parks and Community Services Committee will be doing is reaching out to community groups or individuals within the community that align with the mission statement of the 12 Days event and invite them to participate. So from a public perspective, it may look pretty similar to how we have done it before. But instead of, you know, providing, you know, just sponsoring an event, we're actually working pretty closely with the community partners that we invite to participate.
I think, to me, in the conversations that I had with Ashley is that the city sponsor is we're gonna talk about the environment and anybody can come in. And you really, from First Amendment, you don't have the control on it. But if it's a city-organized event to celebrate, you know, environmental causes or something, then we can be more inviting and have more control of, you know, who is participating. So that's what we're trying to do.
And I think also that the documents that the Parks Committee is going to put forward, once we give them a go on this, they will start lining out some of those details. And then we'll be able to talk about those details and whether they work or not.
And my disformatting is to accomplish specifically what you were talking about, to invite people in to participate. And so there will be more.
Okay, 'cause they've been a real integral part up until now, and I'm just hoping we don't lose that flavor.
I think that what Ashley's proposing gets us where we want to be and then more control. I don't think we lose anything on that.
Right. Is there anybody from the Parks Committee? I know the back row is back there. That wants to comment on this at all, or?
No, our committee has to have a chance to look at it.
Okay.
We do that on Thursday, but we like the direction of this point.
Okay. And that was Barb, for the record.
And the reason for us bringing you two tonight is that there's a relatively quick turnaround and the meeting's happening in the wrong order, but we wanted to make sure that you were okay with where we were at. So that's, that's the thing I'll be asking tonight. Will we bring in whoever we need to take action on in later?
Makes sense.
Okay, so we need to give Ashley a go or no go?
Go.
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 Sounds like a space name.
Okay, Ashley, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ashley.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody. Have a great one.
Good night. Okay. That takes us to our next item, which is Ford Dune Management Discussion. Jeff?
Yes, so this began back before you guys, back in September 11th, with the Science Work Session. And we've been through a few renditions of the different draft ordinances. We think we've come at least to a comfortable place with some of the comprehensive plan amendment language and the zoning ordinance amendment, at least until we revised the direction that I was given back in November to revise the Ford Dune Management Plan. And we've made those revisions, we've kind of restructured it all. And, and then, you know, I would suggest we try to get through that tonight, see how that plays out. And if we can accomplish that, then bring the full package back before you guys, possibly at the next work session, and then schedule that hearing for the next public hearing. It seems like a logical way through this process. In your package, you'll have the January 14th 2020 revised edition. And if you'd like, I can just kind of briefly go through kind of the major changes and why that that was done. Crest did a large portion of helping kind of restructure it and take your comments from the last work session and move that into what we thought was kind of a slim down, more of a user manual with the best practices kept in there. And, and then the different types and directions that a person could take if they're going to need to do some grading. And, and then summarize some of the goals, objectives, and other main components that would feed into the zoning ordinances and the comprehensive plan. So is that okay, if I just go through kind of the main thing? So the first thing that we did was, you know, revise the table of constant, but introduce an executive summary section that gives kind of the direction and a one-page summary that someone, like you said, more user-friendly, easy way to approach this. And then we break it down into the introduction, the grading goals and objectives. And then we move into the Ford Dune configuration and get kind of into the, a little bit of the science. And this is on page four. We talk about the statewide planning goals, our additional requirement above the statewide planning goals, BFE of four feet. Discuss a little bit about still maintaining the integrity of the wildlife and the razor clams, and then show how that plays out in a cross-section of the slope. Then on page five, we get into how it was handled previously in permitting and grading. And then with the new approach at the bottom of the page of the three different types of remedial preservation and emergency slash access. And so the final section is important. We added that in. That's number five, does just say there's no vested or grandfather permits allowed. And then kind of give a diagram of how the remedial preservation emergency on page six differs, the different processes that would, are required with administrative development permit approval at the remedial level. A preservation would go before the Planning Commission as a conditional use permit. And then an emergency access, someone would come in and get a temporary administrative. And then after the emergency's worn off, then that would have to go still through a conditional. So that's how it's broken out. Then we then go into each one of the three different types and how they differ from the remedial, where that sand is inundating a structure or how it's defined in the four different ways. Then we talk about fire-resistant species and replanting after a remedial. Go into the preservation grading, the kind of the new territory of how we've shaped the dune grading under a conditional use permit, and that's on page seven. And continues into page eight. It goes a little bit into the process and what those project requirements are, but doesn't go specifically into the details, which is gonna be left into the zoning ordinance. And then the comprehensive plan, like I said, that gives a broader, kind of a 30,000-square-foot look at it. Then go into, at the bottom of eight, this emergency. We had discussed at the last work session, this kind of idea that the current grading and the, unless it was kind of inundating a structure of some type, it didn't speak to these kind of emergency access requirements that might be needed, say if something did happen to, on ocean or to some of the utilities that are, and we needed immediate things. This would grant that kind of temporary access and give us some guidelines on that and speak to that. Then we get into the, what kind of a trimmed-down version of the best practices, trying to keep the, the main components of sand removal, vegetation, speaking about the two main species of European and American beach grass on page 10, how they shape dunes differently. And then discussion of the vegetation and replanting sections and how, under best practices, under Oregon, what's the best, best practices on that. I'll note that on page 12, since fertilizing has come up quite a bit, that number five still has that fertilizering segment. That's because it's a direct citation from a best practices document. But I wanted to bring you that just in case, you know, you have thoughts on that, if you want a different, you know, a provisionary statement on that or whatever. But just recall that up and note that, 'cause I know we had a lot of discussion about that. So then vegetation maintenance and the transplant and secondary stabilization. You'll also notice that there's some species recommendations you'll, and I would refer you also back at the, at the end of this document, back on page 26, we've got a native plants that has been added for the Ford Dune areas along the coast. And, and then talks about access management for plantings and then breaks down the final portions, which are maintenance, monitoring, and then limitations of this plan. It talks about a annual monitoring for any project that comes through with that over a five-year span. And then the plan monitoring by us, the city, that would happen on a five-year cycle as well. We've left in the, in the appendix, Goal 18 and the language from the state, followed by the, just a review of what the historical management unit strategy was like, just for reference purposes. And then the jurisdictional breakdown that Bill had presented earlier in the science and legal segment. And then a section on definitions. We had discussed maybe key terms that might be important. And so hopefully, we took those from various references, but tried to find those that were most pertinent to what we've discussed throughout the work sessions. And then, like I said, the native plants continues on 26, and then the total reference section for the document. So we've tried to keep it kind of tight and concise, and hopefully they'll still have the best practices as much as we could, rely on those, and give the direction of the new, what you all see as the new way to go with grading. Any thoughts or questions or what I can answer?
I don't know. Other than putting this together all, but I have to admit, this is well done. And I think it's very comprehensive and addresses, I don't know the state requirements, but clarified some things that we will address or have addressed already in the ordinance documents. Good job.
Thank you.
And I don't know, I'm probably gonna jump around here, but when it goes to monitoring on page 14, I thought that the applicant was going to be paying for the monitoring review.
They, they should, yes. That's what.
Okay, I thought you said the city might.
No, no. That, under the plan monitoring, our plan monitoring, so when we monitor our plan, that's the difference between the project monitoring segment. So project monitor, we would annually make them pay for theirs.
Okay.
But if we want to review how our dune grading plan is working out for the city, then that's what that plan monitoring section's about. That's what had been discussed earlier, and I know that's what the Planning Commission had discussed.
Well, and I was hoping that you might give some timeframe here for their monitoring or monitoring of their project, because I know in the past that that hasn't been done in a timely manner. And so if there were, was a timeline suggested, I think it would be helpful.
So we do mention there that affected areas shall be inspected at least annually for a period of five years after grading or sand removal be monitored. Is that, is that?
Rough time of completion or something like that?
Yeah.
So I don't know why we did not.
Okay.
Just within a whole year's time. And then I was disturbed about the fertilizer piece, because I felt that we talked about organic and that possibly we didn't even need it at all, from what Bruce Francis had said in some of the work they've done.
Yeah, that's.
So this is just overkill compared to what else is being mentioned more briefly.
Yeah, I, you know, that's, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because I, it is a, it's, it's directly opposite of what you guys discussed, but I don't think we found best practices from Oregon that is, that would speak to what you guys had brought forward. So how you want to handle that, we could just drop that section and might be the best, unless we can find something specifically.
I think that Bruce's comments were based on a particular time, that it was a wet season when the planting was done. And if it was, if there is a consideration for having the project done at a different timeframe, there may be something that, from best practices, they might suggest.
Yeah, and so we might say a kind of a preface to the planting section, saying, you know, we, Cana Beach prefers non-fertilized replanting at, you know, and then, and so we preface this, but the state of Oregon follows whatever. And so something like that, I could, we could possibly put that in and see what you all think on that.
I like that.
You know, I, I think it's addressed too in the ordinance, that the requirements for putting, for an application and the approval process.
Yeah.
Specify whether and when fertilizing would or could be done. This is, an overview says that if you do it, that's how you do it. 'Cause I, you know.
Yeah.
I'd get in a position where it really would be important, and then we're not allowed to do it because we've said we would never use fertilizer.
I'd like to see it. I'd like to stress organic fertilizer, though. And I don't think, at least in this page 12, it talks really that much, then it doesn't talk at all about organic fertilizer.
Right, right. Yeah, we could put that in that preparatory.
One other item was on. I know that you're saying that European beach grass should be planted closer to buildings, but we've also learned that European beach grass, and it's actually right above there in the pictures, creates higher dune situations. So I was wondering if that was kind of in conflict with each other?
I thought the reason for that was that European beach grass would hold the sand better near the structures rather than letting it pile up.
Yeah, I think that's right, Mike. And the, I think the issue is that if you have something that holds less, less sand close to the structures, you're gonna get more bypass. So that's why the biggest catchers matter.
Okay. And then I guess my last comment is at the bottom, as information on site condition, for page 14, as information on site conditions is developed or should events occur which alter existing conditions, directions contained in this document may need to be modified. I almost would like to see that taken out, because it kind of creates a reason to disregard the whole piece.
Does that mean we would have to go back through this process to modify it? We can't just reinstitute action, modify it?
That's inviting people to find reasons to.
And Robyn, unless it was an emergency. Unless it was an emergency, if something changed, I would just see them having to go through the same process. It's like Mike says, I don't think it's something that somebody says, well, we wanna push the dunes out or whatever, we changed our mind, conditions have changed. That would, to us, I think, would constitute, you know, you go, you want, you want to revise the permit, you go through the permit process. If it was an emergency situation, and the only thing I can think is that there was a, you know, major erosion or some sort of a significant accumulation, something like that, we would probably approve emergency measures, but nothing more. I understand, I understand your point, but I think that that's, there'd be two levels that this would be worked at. But if it's just a, I wanna do something different, it would go through the process again.
Yeah, but can, can that sentence say what you said then?
No, we can, we can modify this.
Yeah, I think that the sentence needs to be modified to say that.
No, I agree we can do that. But I think, I'm just trying to say that this is what the process would be.
Okay, if it's modified, I'll be happy with that.
Okay.
Any other comments on? Nancy, do you have any?
No, I, I, other than some of the things that Robin mentioned, I'm happy with it.
Well, then I can chime in here. I think, Jeff, this is a really nicely-done document. I can't support it, but not, it's not because you didn't do it well. I think we need to have a restoration component of the dunes so that we can go beyond just the limitation of anything near the remedial or the preservation. I think we need to have that for any instance in the future that could come up, that we need to address problems further out into the dune areas.
I take that as a comment.
That's a comment.
I'd like to see what these adjustments incorporated. Do we bring this before the council for a vote, along with the, I'll bring this up this point. We've already had work sessions on the ordinance and on the comprehensive plan. And we're having a work session on the dune management plan now. So it's not clear to me why we have another work session on all three of those documents when, in my view, those other two were ready to be put to bed. This was the last document remaining we're addressing at today, with these couple modifications. It seemed that we wouldn't need another full work session on all three documents again before, we could then bring it to following month for a council consideration. If you used this term before, we'd work Smith this to death. And I think we've got everything that everybody has brought up addressed, and I think these were good edits today. But if we bring that back, I guess I would like my preference to be to see that we bring this back at a council meeting for a vote, and it can be amended at that time. I just see dragging it out, dragging it out, dragging it out.
That's a good point. Let me just ask, is there anything else that needs to be done on the other two documents or are we good with those?
It's up to them, not that I, not that we know.
But are there any requirements that we have to try to meet?
Other than making sure that it's consistent with what's in, but that's.
And that's the only reason I had suggested, you know, that reserve that ability to have another work session to review the documents. That's if you guys had made a lot of changes tonight or even carried this over and made another change. So that's all I was saying, Mike, on that, so.
So it's really up to you as to whether or not you're ready to go to take the actions, 'cause there's a series of actions, the next meeting or go to a workshop.
My concern had been that we had inconsistency, but I, it opened up. I've just done a good job of. job of kind of working this thing backwards, taking it from our ordinances and comprehensive plan and making sure that this document is consistent with it. So, me, the consistency concern I had has been.
It's whatever the council wants.
And I, I agree with Mike. I'd like to get on with it. I don't, I don't remember that there was any discussion of the ordinance or the comprehensive plan that we had left over, that we, any issues that we needed to deal with.
There's not no reflection either.
Other than the fact that I have an issue with the whole thing.
Yeah.
So yes, there is an issue. I, uh, kind of disagree a little bit with Mike. I think wordsmithing is important. I think we need to make sure that we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's as much as possible, or we run into the kind of problem we're going to have with the next agenda item, which was a poorly wordsmithed document to start with. So I, I would say, um, the more we look at it, the better. But again, I am the odd man out here and I, that's all.
So consensus, my unanimous, um, is to bring it to the March regular meeting, I'm sorry, the February regular meeting.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Next item?
Mr. Mayor, before we get to the next item, we do have people in the audience that may want to be discussing something that, um, I don't know if they want to wait through the whole agenda. Do we have any room for them to comment eventually?
We're commenting on items of the agenda at the time of the agenda item.
Okay, if they have something that's.
Before or after, I mean?
During the discussion.
Oh.
But if they have, if they have an item that isn't on the agenda, when can they comment?
Next, next city council meeting, public comment.
Next city council meeting.
So if it's on the agenda item, we're going to talk about it and it's okay, but.
So people could talk about this now if they have?
Yeah, um, so Robbie or, um, sure. Just keep it brief if you want to make a comment. Yeah. I need you to come up and do the official sign in and all that kind of stuff, like normal.
Excuse me, Ken, Sam, what do they comment on four dune?
On this item, so yes, four dune.
Yeah, four dune.
I'm sorry, we haven't gone to the next item yet. So. Come on up. So this is the management plan specifically.
I thought we closed the record on board and management.
Yeah, the, the last few work sessions, the council has not taken public testimony. I don't.
I know.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're not there, we're not quite there yet, Jeff.
Sorry, Jeff.
I wasn't sure.
No, I, I just want to make sure every topic is touched here, and I had promised some folks that we'd have some, uh, time to speak. I didn't, so. The next item, which will be the Nicholson E.D. easement accessory structure memo. Jeff and Bill, please introduce.
If I can open it up.
Bruce.
Mr. Mayor, um, council will ask for a report on how the permit for the, uh, what's being referred to as the Harding Garage, uh, was approved. We have provided you on the thought process and the documents that were used, uh, in, in making that decision. We have also forwarded that information to the planning commission. For, so for tonight, I'd like, uh, Bill to be given the chance to do an introduction, introduction and background, um, and then have Jeff address the thought, again, the thought process and how it happened, and also for Jeff to talk about, uh, what we're doing to improve current practices to make, uh, the record better than what we've, you know, have to work with now and, uh, and several other improvements that we're making. So with that, I would turn it over to you, Jeff.
Jeff, you were going to.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll give a brief, uh, uh, like Bruce said, at our planning commission meeting a couple of months ago, uh, it was brought up, you know, how did that get approved? And so when we drafted this, uh, document, it was really with that in mind. So how did that get approved? I did not feel that this is a legal defense of any kind, that's not what I do. This is, I wanted to guys, to give you guys an understanding of how I made those decisions along the, along the way. And so it's broken down, the document is really into three seg- sections, talking about the plan development background, which I know very little about, except for what I've researched and looked into since. Two, the building permit and plan review, which is what I do, and that's what, that's what we all get into. And then, uh, three, future processing. So, um, I have worked across the country in different jurisdictions, and so as Bill, you know, how, how these processes work differently in different areas and how they can be improved here is something that from day one I've hoped to do for us and, and what we're working on to improve this process going forward. And that's really the spirit that I wanted to keep in mind, uh, going into this. And so I'm going to pass it over to Bill and he's going to give you a little update of really the background.
Thanks, and I was here as, as this made its way through the, the lengthy process. And so want to give some background that many of you are aware of, but just make sure we're all starting from the same starting point. This is about a plan development. Thought it'd be helpful to give a little background about a plan development. It's essentially an overlay zone and it allows additional flexibility in standards when you have odd geographic or certain characteristics of property that make it appropriate. So it can allow for clustered development or other types of things of those nature. Also allows for greater control by the city. For example, in, in the case we're talking about, limits on habitable space that would otherwise not be available. And what that means is you really end up with an additional filter. Typically, when somebody comes in for a development application, you look at the city code and you say, is this allowed? Let's go through what's requirements of the zones and the various things. And when you've got a PD overlay, you do that, plus you then add an additional filter. Is something that would otherwise be prohibited allowed because of the flexibility, or something that would otherwise be allowed prohibited because, you know, it was controlled in some reason. Some plan developments are very prescriptive and control all elements of development down to lighting and colors that can be painted and, and other things. Others are not very prescriptive and just take care of certain things. To the extent it's going to be prescriptive control, it's got to be set out somewhere in the plan, you know, in the conditions of approval, in the plat, or somewhere in the decision. If there isn't some control or some variance, then it's otherwise controlled by city code like any other development. So when a, you know, I think I already said, when an application comes in, look at city code, then you'll look at the plan development, see if there are any changes. So this plan development was submitted in 2014. There's a preliminary approval that occurred in 2015. Planning commission recommended dial, cannot, council approved it. That decision was exhibit 10 of Jeff's memo. It contains some, uh, some conditions. It came back at, you know, although it's a planned development, essentially operates similar to a subdivision approval, where you have a preliminary development that identifies most of the major land use pieces of it, and then you have a final approval that says, now that you've gone out and built the improvements and laid things out and actually worked on the ground, is it in substantial conformance? And that's really what the final, uh, PD approval was, is it conform with the preliminary? The final PUD was approved in 2016 and added a number of conditions to the ones that were in the preliminary. But it, at the end of the day, this plan development is essentially a four-lot residential subdivision with a shared access and shared common areas. And, you know, uh, the main distinguishing feature is probably that shared access drive that goes into the middle of the area and the restricted building envelopes on the site. There are really three conditions of approval that came into play as, uh, this was evaluated. One was condition number two, which required the shared access and maintenance easement. Condition number three, that limited the habitable space to 9,000 square feet among all the buildings and specifically excluded decks, porches, garages, and uninhabitable accessory buildings. And finally, condition 16, that governed several aspects of the development, including how these things were going to be, what kind of siding, what types of roofs, um, and included, again, specific discussion about garages being allowed as detached or under the gra- under the housing. Finally, as part of the final plat, uh, which was submitted both the planning commission and city councils, part of the final approval, it identified a parking easement separate from the common access easement and separate from the common open space. Um, and the parking easement was for the benefit of the neighboring property out to the north. The diagram attached at the end, or actually the, the blown up portion of the final plat that is attached at the end of the, uh, memo shows a pretty good identification of the, the parking easement, the common access easement, and the common open space area. And that was the, the, the context in which Jeff received the application for the garage, and that'll turn over to Jeff to talk about how he evaluated it.
So, um, how did the process work? Uh, you know, I, I start the conversations with the applicants. They come in, the usually applicant team, and, uh, we have discussions along with plans, usually sketch plans, the conditions that, um, the plan development is under. And we, uh, often with plan developments, you'll look at the plat, the plat notes, uh, that are part of those, um, the plat, uh, conditions of approval. And then a plan development agreement is often a key component in plan developments. This one doesn't have that, that extensive plan development agreement that many will, will have. And so, uh, we had the, uh, early meetings on it. Those are early initial meetings discussed an accessory dwelling unit, uh, because we, what was presented as part of the initial package was the preliminary conditions, uh, and the final, which is, um, preliminary conditions are, uh, attachment 10. And then the final, uh, which are different from those final conditions that, uh, became apparent through the process and I note in the, uh, on page four. And then, uh, the, so as I received the plat, I of course looked at those details as, uh, Bill mentioned, that's on page seven of your document. They refer to various, uh, recorded, uh, deeds and instruments. And so I pull those from the county courthouse and look at those or ask the applicant for those first if they have them. If they don't provide them, then I pull those from, uh, the county. And so that's really what I base my decisions on. If I have a signed plat from the city, that's really my guiding document. Whenever I do a plan review or a, 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 a plan review and a building permit on a new, on a new development on subdivision, uh, that's the document that we have signed off on as a city. Whether, uh, the, the planner at the time, that that's approved at the, um, for the, with our signature from the public works director, the, uh, planning commissioner, the mayor, um, those that are the signatories, uh, then the, if there's documents on there that we don't know of or are not made aware of during the process, uh, it's the planner and those signatories' responsibility to say, hey, we need to see this or what, what is this, what, you know, to get definition on that. So, um, that's my understanding of how I review the documents. As this proceeded, uh, I will go into a little bit about the process, uh, issues. Uh, one of the issues we have is we don't have a ready to go to list of those conditions. I pull from my folder within our planning department's electronic file, uh, that only provided the preliminary, uh, fi- final conditions. Then as the process, uh, developed, I noticed the Lou Bud reference at the bottom of that, so I asked, hey, where does this come from? So I called up Mark Barnes. Mark Barnes told me that's in a separate folder in, um, a separate, uh, electronic folder. I pulled that record, that gives me that final, and so we immediately asked them to stop work, um, and say, issued a letter saying we need to change this from an accessory dwelling down to an accessory structure because of the, uh, added conditions that were put on for, uh, final review. During that, we, our accessory dwelling language is specifically built around, uh, the kitchen, okay? So if, if a kitchen is in that unit, that means it's an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, we made them also remove stairs and remove the additional HVAC system that they were going to put in. And so, uh, we tried to limit as much as scope, but as many garages in this town, we do not limit garages from being heated, we do not limit garages from having restrooms, we do not, uh, limit garages to certain sizes. And that's brought about, uh, also in discussion from the planning commission and others about the required yard. This was not found to be in the required yard, so we, uh, do not limit that to 120 square feet. A barn or other structure is not limited by, by the size except for lot coverage of, in association with, uh, with the size of the lot. And so that's how that developed and played out over time. They made the revisions to the plans. We have the final plans in there showing that we, the stairway was taken out. What we do is, uh, we inspect and, and find out what, um, they, that they meet code. And then if someone's living in the, uh, structure, that's really what we're holding to as far as an accessory dwelling unit, is somebody illegally, illegally living in that. Uh, there's no sign of anything like that so far, we will keep an eye on it, uh, but that's really how the process worked for us. For the future, we've signed up already to launch on the state's e-permitting system within the state's e-permitting system, which we've been paying for, for, uh, I think around 10 years, uh, with our building permits, but haven't been utilizing. Uh, that e-permitting system has a conditions of approval, uh, electronic tracking section as part of its workflow documentation. So any condition of approval on any plan development or even any subdivision or any other finding that we make can be tracked and, and, and held to those standards. Currently, I would have to track down, and I think I outlined in here, that I have to go to different binders, then go either search up in the attic or in various folders, or, uh, as I talk about in the next section, we're currently digitizing a large segment of our hard files. So as those become searchable, uh, you know, that's going to improve, uh, vastly what we can retrieve. Currently, we have about three or four different things we have to either manually check or electronically check through different, uh, filing systems within our offices. What this will do will give us the ability to digitize all those land use applications from signed permits and building permits to conditional use permits, uh, plan developments, and tie those to properties and track that along with conditions of approval or anything else with that. There's other ways as, uh, with, on the legislative front that we can do a better job as well. For instance, the signature blocks. Who signs off on those? Uh, currently, like I said, it's the mayor, the planning commissioner, uh, and the public works director. In many jurisdictions, it's, it's the planner that has to also sign off on it. So they're held to that responsibility to check that and not just give that over to those other departments because it's often the planner that's tracking those conditions and other things, plat notes that go along with the project. Along with that, uh, just a simple posting of the site, uh, which is done. I've never worked in a jurisdiction that doesn't make the site posted if a land use action is part of that. So there's, there's components in how we do permitting from building, uh, permit review to development permit review to, um, conditional and on up the chain that could make this a more, uh, transparent and easier process to follow from the citizen's side and from our side. And then, uh, language. I've brought this up with the planning commission back when we were doing short-term rentals, that the language that we have surrounding habitable space, around our livable space, whichever version you're looking at, whether it's the building code or our zoning ordinances, and units and what's required in each one of these accessory dwelling units or, or those things, we could do. things, we could do a much better job, a more up-to-date, more modernized version of that language, and how we handle these things, which would make it easier and less gray, when we go out to try to permit these things, and also on code enforcement and follow-up on those issues. You know, I understand, there's a long, I think the mayor said, in the forwarding management, I knew, we're not going to make anybody happy. And I feel that way with the Nicholson Plan Development, that it's difficult, we're not going to make anyone happy with this. But I do think that what we're trying to do is give you a good report of how that process happened, how we should function in the future, going forward, and do a better job of looking at these things, and if we believe things were missing, I'm happy to own up to whatever was wrong in the process, but I don't think that we can look back and say certain things without looking at the facts that were presented to us, and owning up to that as well. So, that's all I have. Bruce, do you have anything?
No. Let's just any questions?
I think staff has done an excellent job of ferreting out all the details on this one. Good job, Jeff. Any questions?
I have a question. Jeff, can you give me a definition of a, what is it called, the required yard? What is the definition of a required yard?
So, a required yard is that area in the setback. So, if you're building on a traditional 5,000-square-foot lot, you will see language that the required yard, which is attachment to on your, is the actual language on that. But what we say, is that if you're going to place a structure in the required yard, in that 15 feet from the parcel line, that has to be reserved as structure-free, if you're going to place that, you can, under 120 square feet. Okay? So, you can-
You can place it in the setback, as you're saying?
Yes, you can, up to five feet, to the property line.
Okay.
Okay? And so, we allow that kind of thing, but if you're going to go over that, or you want, you know, to place other things in that required yard, we have a development permit process for that.
So, in other words, you could place it within that, within 10 feet?
Within five feet of that property line.
Of that property line, but that 10 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff, and just to try to clarify, if the, if there's setbacks all the way around, and then you've got this remaining space, is inside the remaining space, is not where the restriction is?
Right. There's nothing restricting inside it. Well, there's other things that restrict you-
Right, but I mean, as far as the-
That's not the required yard.
Right, okay.
And so, also, in plan developments, often, the setbacks are defined solely to that plan development, not to the underlying zoning that's often part of the, that zoning. So, if a plan development is done in the R2 district, often, there'll be language that spells out on that, you know, to reference a certain plat, or a certain document, that says that this is what the lot lines are, or some just refer to the underlying zone.
Now, the Hardings didn't, the Hardings didn't have another, didn't own any lot, they just had an easement, right?
Right.
And did that easement allow a garage?
Yes.
It did allow a garage?
Yeah.
At 120 square feet?
It just says, anything that's allowed within the zoning code. And so, accessory structures are allowed within the zoning code.
But what would-
It doesn't give a dimension. That's what I'm saying. A lot of this, you know, like I said, if, I mean, if we learn from this, we define those things very clearly going forward, just like we, you know, habitable space, 9,000 square feet amongst four, and then it's got specific language that exempts certain things out of that. One of those is unconditioned space, and things like that. So, those kind of terms, when you're sharing 9,000 square feet among four, almost an impossible thing to track from a planning perspective, because, quite frankly, usually, we're not really looking into that kind of easement, or agreement language between parties, right? How can we track that, really? So, it's better, if you're going to do that in the future, you say, lot one is held to this amount of square feet, lot two is held to this amount of square feet. Don't let that, you know, be directed from some kind of mutual agreement, that has to be tracked. That's another thing that has to be tracked. And that's one of the things I have to stress, that if you're getting into the plan development game, usually, you're going to get into more staffing, more resources, because each one of those things adds, it's like setting up a quasi-zoning district there. You know, each one's a different animal, and it has to be interpreted. There's jurisdictions that do, you know, I think Glen County, one of the counties in Georgia that I work with, they have over 300 planned developments within the county, but you know, they have a staff. And so, that's the kind of thing, different jurisdictions, and you need to think about these, and I think when we talked about it in the visioning and discussion that we had, I tried to say, there's the two processes going, the long thinking and short thinking, and you have to really think about how much time a staff has to deal with these things, and work on those, because more resources will be needed, as we develop into these more detailed.
I have one, I know, just a moment. The house that was, or the, I guess, the house that is supposed to be on that lot that abuts the garage, the Harding garage, what kind of a setback on that side was, is required there? Is that a 15-foot setback?
It's, I'm sorry, I don't have a, I could, I'll find that out for you, but I think it's just five feet from that. It's defined on one of the documents that I referred to for my decision.
Because it looks like the garage goes over the easement line, and I don't know by how much. And then, I don't know if it's going to abut the setback, or affect the setback for that house?
Yeah, it does not do, yeah, it doesn't go beyond that line. In fact, they have a, you can see in the parking easement document, the exact location of that parking easement. So, when I looked at the plat, I looked at that parking easement, it's defined on that plat, you know, where this accessory use can go. And so, that's what I referred to on that. They initially wanted to put the unit on the lot line, zero lot line, but I said, you know, we can't go, you know, it's got to be five feet, so, five feet clearance, so.
Wish I had this. I've got many, but. Had there not been an easement granted, and Nicholson just wanted to build a garage there, would it have been allowed?
No.
No. So, we had a PUD, or PD, that had certain conditions and requirements, and yet, Nicholson created a new easement, without going through a plan or a process to amend the PD to grant that easement. And then, we ended up with an easement that says, now you can build whatever you want on it. We just want to say that you can build whatever you want. The city has to determine what can be built.
So, that's a fair point, and may let Bill speak to that, but I do want to say, that from, and what I'm trying to give you a sense of, is my review, right? My review is, you know, largely dependent, a first review, on that plat. The plat states the parking easement. The plat states, so I'm not, I don't go back through 800 pages of documentation, I don't look at minutes. And so, that's all I'm saying, is the staff person's not going to go and look at all of that, to make sure that things were processed, you know, that you guys got full review, or whatever, because once you sign the plat, and those signatures, it's the responsibility of the city to do that.
And it's recorded, I understand all that.
Bruce?
I'm sorry, Mike, if you want to finish, but, well, if I could, just to get to that point, one of the things that we saw in this, is that we need to require the planners to be involved with that plat, because they're tracking the documents, and there were documents that were presented late, I don't know if people picked up that there were those kind of changes, but that would, the planner would be the person that would be able to say, before the plat is signed, this is coming, this may change things, or whatever. And it didn't appear that that happened this time. So, we have, when people recollect, on what was approved, it may not be the same as the records we have, and we need to reconcile that better than what was done. I'm sorry, go ahead. Mike, I guess you have an ask and question.
Okay. I understand from Jeff's perspective, what you had to work with. We had, once a planner left, in the middle of this, and he came on, I understand. I can't understand why this didn't go back to the Planning Commission, seeking a variance. It seemed like-
Well, what would it be for? See, I guess, from my perspective, or any planning perspective, what would it be seeking a variance for? Because it stated that, and the plat shows that there's a parking easement. The parking easement refers to a document that states that there can be accessory structures there, and it shows where they can be. And then, not only that, but the conditions go, all numerous times talk about accessory structures, that are not part of that, you know, that are detached. So, I just don't know what they would be applying for a variance to, or what the change would be. And so, that's, from a process perspective, you know, that's where, you know, I go back to saying, when you sign plats, you're signing off on something.
I don't want to belabor it, but you, the variance would be to the PD that was approved. That's the variance, I'm not going to, not the setback, or that. I don't want to belabor that any longer, I just think-
Yeah, I understand what you're-
I understand how that happened, and it was right, or legal, or anything else. But, the next point is, they applied for an ADU. And it seems very clear, and I corrected that, they applied for an ADU. And our ordinances say that an ADU can be an auxiliary dwelling unit to a primary residence, and there are none on that property. There's a square on a piece of paper, there's no house there. Also says that you can rent it as long as you live on the property, and you're primary resident. So, they're putting together an ADU. That's been changed, there's supposedly no kitchen. I haven't seen it, we sent the inspectors to look at it. So, that's one point. It's, built as an ADU, shouldn't have been authorized, correct that. The next thing is, it's now called a garage. I looked at the ordinances on garage, and it said, no two-story garages. And we have a two-story building there, that is a garage.
Yeah, I-
To me, that's what it finally boils down to, is a two-story building there, a not an ADU, stairs removed, you have to heat it, and a bathroom, no kitchen, nobody's allowed to live there, and there'd be a lot of neighbors watching that from darn close. But it's two stories, and it locks a door.
You know, you can ask Alton, the building official, we would not consider that a second story. It's a locked area. I mean, that's, sure, it's semantics, and like I said, there are things you can improve your language with. I've worked in jurisdictions that are much stricter on these kind of things. But we don't have that. And right now, we can, we do not stop people from putting storage lofts, or doing anything in accessory structures. We just don't. You can, I mean, you can build those kinds of, anything you want. I mean, plenty of ours are heated, plenty of ours have bathrooms, have partial, you know, cooking, you know, kind of kitchen space, but not the full kitchen, you know, the kitchen area. So, those kind of things, that's the only kind of, like you said, teeth that we have, and we don't have, it's pretty much-
And there's no restriction on the height, other than our normal building height.
Yeah, we don't. And what's interesting to me, Mike, and I think that's the point, that, you know, we had many discussions about this with Alton, about these terms. That's the thing that got me, is that it's, in the conditions, there are, you know, kind of height, as mentioned, I believe, in one of the conditions, or something, but it doesn't say on the accessories, and that, you know, that's really, you know, they could easily have just said, you know, all accessory structures should be banned, but they didn't, so.
Jeff, when you approved this space, how many square feet were you thinking you were approving?
That's not relevant to the accessory structure, unless it's in a required yard for, that's, so-
But do you remember what the-
I don't, off the top of my head, sorry.
The reason I'm asking is because we've been talking about it being a garage. It's got a heated floor.
Right.
It also has 100,000 BTU furnace, which usually would accommodate-
Which is for the heated floor. Yeah.
But it also would accommodate a 2,400-square-foot property.
It was no HVAC, and no ductwork, or anything allowed in there, so. On the point about, so accessory dwelling-
Wouldn't that have been a requirement to you, though?
Accessory dwelling is limited to 600 square feet, right? So, that was the initial, right? And then, like you said, after we found it was an accessory structure, or that's the terms, you know, there's really no limitation, other than the footprint.
But there should have been a red flag with all of these items in that structure, that it was going to be more than that-
It could be in many of our, yeah, accessory structures. I agree. I think in many of our city, accessory structures are a red flag. That's what I brought before the Planning Commission, we need better language. There's nothing stopping any space from being heated, currently.
Can I touch on something that Robin Hughes brought up? One of the issues that we had, is that, yes, the accessory dwelling unit was allowed initially, and the plans, the conditions that we had in the file, it should have been final, did not address that. It wasn't until we got the Luba file, that it said, you know, you can't have an accessory dwelling unit, and then it was addressed. So, at the time that it was found out, it wasn't, we didn't have that information at the very beginning. Otherwise, it would have been picked up then, but as soon as it was, it was picked up. I believe that the applicant came in, with just a preliminary, and I think there were seven conditions, and then later, there were some other conditions talked about, but it wasn't until it got to the, more to the final, and we saw that what was in, actually, we never, I don't know if we found the final conditions from the city's standpoint, we're just using the ones from the Luba file, you know, at this point, to go ahead and make the determination. So, you're right, had, we had all the information at the very beginning, it probably wouldn't have started out as an accessory structure, but once that, the shell and all that was in place, we made the modifications that could be made, to not allow it for that use.
And we just don't have language, currently, that can, you know, change that, stop that structure from looking the way it does, is what I'm saying, so.
Just for clarification, you use the term accessory structure, that's different than-
The accessory dwelling, yes, right. Because that ADU's really dependent on the kitchen.
And an ADU is limited up to 600 square feet.
600 square feet.
For just a barn, storage building, something else, if it's not in the required yard.
Yeah, it can be larger.
So, Jeff, so an accessory structure is allowed, just in this planned unit development?
The accessory structure, no, accessory structures, you mean across the city?
Yes.
Yeah, you can have accessory structures, that's what a normal garage is, it's an accessory structure.
Can you have one on a lot with no other structure involved with it?
Yes.
My recollection of that is, that is not the case, that you cannot build a garage on a lot.
I can bring some back for you, because we had, Mark Barnes, in one of our very first meetings that we had, I think it was maybe a November meeting, I came on board in that month, and I believe that that's one of the first questions I had, you know, because we had one that came before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission approved this accessory structure- accessory structure. Granted, the person owned two lots within the subdivision that were side-by-side adjoining lots, but it's still, he put an accessory structure on a, on the second lot. And I said, you know, in many jurisdictions, they don't permit that. But he says, well, we traditionally allow that if they stay within the lot dimension so that the primary can be built within a conforming use. And so, it's not to say that that's traditionally done, I haven't found that to be the case, but that's what they've done. The planning commission reviewed it and approved it. They put a deed restriction on it, and I think that was under my recommendation, to put a deed restriction that said, if this is ever sold, you know, that they must be, it's one piece. But I don't think they had done that prior, and that's, so that's how, that's my recollection of all that. And I'm happy to research that.
Well, I will use my own property as an example. I subdivided my property before I moved in, and on one part of the property that was subdivided, there was essentially a large garage. Once that was subdivided, the garage portion had to come down, in Reinmar's interpretation, because Canada Beach does not allow accessory structures on lots without a house being there with it.
And I totally understand and agree that in most places I've worked, that's similar. And that's why I asked that of more-
Are you saying that we don't have any language in our codes that mandates that?
Not that I'm familiar, I can investigate that, but, you know, like I said, that's what we approved, or the planning commission approved in November.
Okay.
Well, and Daryl Johnson also was denied for that very reason.
Yeah.
So this seems unusual. Are we gonna let people speak?
Yeah, Jeff, did you wanna comment on this?
I have no comments.
Please.
Well, I have a period of state, but it's got more than a war at this point. It's not popular. Good evening, my name is Jeff Harrison. Give us some word to your advantage. And I'm here presenting myself and my life to some persons. Appreciate that for sure to speak if you'd mind on this. I've got this once again about this DVD. I submitted a letter yesterday, I'm hoping that you received it from where it was. It's a lot more detail, I've already got a lot of detail. I've tried to respond to some things that were said tonight. Do I have the ability to display it down on the screen?
I don't think so.
Do you have my letter? First thing I want to comment on, I guess, is, in our code, it does pretty clearly say that accessory structure is to be on the same lot as the primary use. That's what I'm kinda curious as to why that's not the case. Our ordinary accessory structure is not on our main lot. So I'm a lot on about some of this.
Are you guys wanting me to just do a back and forth? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, this is kind of an open discussion.
Yeah, so I'm gonna be answering to this?
Excuse me, just saying, just in doing so, remember that we just saw that letter yesterday, when Jeff responded, he had ours for a week, so I can't guarantee everything or be able to answer, respond to every point that's made.
So obviously, the staff is limited on how they can answer, and what they can answer.
Well, that's a pretty softball question.
That one is a pretty softball question.
Yeah, and I can give you my softball response, is that it says, from my understanding, it's to the use, right? It's a residential use. There's a residential use on that lot. And that's how Mark had interpreted that accessory to the primary use, which is residential. It's just another portion of that residential use.
So accessory structure, I'm just doing a quick search on our code, seventeen oh four oh oh, accessory structure means a structure where you just, it's built and it's supported with main use of the property located on the same lot as the main use. So we have very clear that it should be on the same lot as the primary home, which is the main use.
A question maybe arises, maybe you're looking at it, since they have an easement, a restricted easement, to use that adjacent, does that somehow mean that it's on their lot? I don't think it does, but-
I don't, but, you know, I also think of, for example, if I own a house and a garage, and my neighbor comes to me and says, I've got this fancy car, I don't have a garage, can I put it in your garage for, you know, a thousand bucks a month? And I say, sure, that'd be great, you know? That's more of a lease rather than an easement, but is that get away from the residential use, because you're getting paid to allow that use to occur on your property? You know, the easement secures it for a greater period of time. You know, it's, it is something that, you know, if, assuming Jeff's, you know, that you've got a residential use, you've got a garage that's internal and supported and located on the same lot as that residential use, does it then restrict who can use that garage or not? And the easement makes it clear that it actually is the neighbor who is using it, but, you know, the, it is internal and supported to the use that is on the lot itself.
Okay.
Rewriting definition. The next point I want to ask about was lot one, the PUD. The diagram I see that was provided in the packet, to me, shows that future home of Mr. Najimi Jones, that lot, facing east. So required yard, rear setback, to the west of fifteen feet. And the side yards are five feet. And I just don't believe you're in that spot. And PUD condition, per condition of sixteen, it says, that house is required to face south, which means it's required rear yard, it's to the north. And the required rear yard, rear yard, is measured from the property line. That was the diagram that I provided yesterday. If you have it here, hopefully. Your lines here will show, here's where the required rear yard is for lot one, fifteen feet from the property line. That puts this harding structure squarely in the required rear yard. That means that it is, as per the same code that Mr. Allen was quoting- Something you would order, the fact is- This structure should be within, so high as twenty, square feet, at twelve feet. Mr. Allen was saying that garages are owned by height, it's semantics. Well, twelve feet is not semantics, it's concrete, it's a number. I believe this structure should have been held back, twelve feet height. They also found some setback at FAQs on the city website, again, speaks to rear yard fifteen feet, front yard fifteen feet. And number six, I don't know if six on there says, accessory building may be located in the rear yard to within five feet of the rear property line, and it's what it is. Where the building is no higher than fourteen feet. So it's got a couple of concrete, non-somatic numbers to pick from, twelve or fourteen. Certainly not twenty-four.
Jeff, do you repeat that point, what you were referring to there?
This is on the city website, I recall, FAQ setback FAQs. I printed this off, speaks to the rear yard setback being fifteen feet, no, and front yard two. That's measured from the property line. And then point six, these are exceptions to the setback requirement, says accessory building may be located in the rear yard to within five feet of the rear property line, where the building is no higher than fourteen feet. And also says, the building's location will not be determined by the planning property, it's not a structural use, from adjacent buildings. So again, those are two places to pick from, twelve feet or fourteen feet, but not twenty-four. So we might have to argue about how many stories there is, although if you've got two hundred and ten square feet of outdoor space on second floor, that's identified in your building plans as a second floor. We think it's a two-story building. I think it's pretty clear. Additional rule conditions from the PUD, we think, we already mentioned, more confirmation though, on that lot one, facing to the right now, the diagram's facing east, so I assume that's correctable, and it's oversight, and that lot, that house will face south as per PUD condition.
Are we talking Najimi? Yeah, I haven't reviewed that yet, Najimi.
It was provided in the packet.
I think that's because Toban Architects did the same, you know, so it's-
Well, we don't get missed, how those conditions are known, and that house should have fifteen foot rear setback and front setback, on that lot, should be facing south because of the conditions. We also don't understand how a shared maintenance agreement specifies common areas that are shared for the PUD owners, and they ignored a sole benefit easement given to third parties. Mr. Vice, I believe you were asked that question in the planning commission for cities, I don't think you proceeded to answer. It seems those documents are odd and they up and forth. One says you've got common shared space for the benefit of the PUD owners, and the other one says this is a sole benefit easement, and why letters, trust us, are just gonna be cited.
That's back to my point, that didn't come to the planning commission for a variance on that PUD, because the drawings that the city council approved, showed that as a parking easement, I think it was ten spaces, for the common, announced and restricted by, and easement granted by the property owner.
And I guess what I'd point you to is the diagram shown on page seven, which is the excerpt from the final plat that was recorded and had been submitted to the planning commission as well to the city council, and shows the parking easement as that rectangular area in the northeast corner. And then you have this other area that has common access easement with arrows pointing out, the common open space area over in the far right corner. And what it shows is that the parking easement, that's, what does it say? Future parking easement for the, you know, the Hardings is on, is not within the common access easement. And this is the same document that's appended to the common access easement. So in fact, the parking easement is not part of the common access easement, those are two different areas.
Which, again, was never discussed in the hearings.
I understand it wasn't discussed.
Came in later. Read the planning grant, this way.
Yeah, something I'd like to pass out, which remains of this, my approach, which I wanted to do that.
I'll have to call in there.
I don't know if that's necessary right now, I could pass them around to you.
They end up here.
Yeah, there you go, you can keep them. First thing is, this is what was passed out on March first, twenty sixteen, PUD hearing, this was passed out during the hearing, for you all. I just want to show you what you were supposed to internalize there on the moment, you know you were approved. First was just down here, a little highlight, up in final plaque, I don't know how many of those you saw on it, this was another one. Now the back two pages, what is the file that they have, and I've noted what you were supposed to have been, this is where you were shown the parking easement, and the notation that there's a sheet note, over here it is, a sheet note. I doubt you could do that by imagination. We're certainly given a nice full copy of that tonight, your packet, but that's what we were given at the heat of moment, March first, twenty sixteen. The other thing I want to pass out was, the only sketch or rendition of the PUD that was ever submitted during the proceedings, you'll remember, the code says that the applicant is required to submit full detail of what the PUD appearance is to be, and this is what was submitted, and then they got the minister, I think the one short. If you have any questions, please do have to share. You see, there's a parking pad, there's no building. That's what you approved. That was submitted during the planning commission's final hearing, and I believe included in your packet as well.
So Mayor, can I address some of this?
Sure.
First of all, I think there's two things going on. There's one, is that what staff decided based on the record, and I understand that Jeff is making points about how the record was constructed. We've already said that we think that there needs to be a much better process, but what made it into the record, you know, whether it's correct, whether or not, and again, I mean, it's being stated that the document you have is what you approved. It was, it was something that was put forward during the planning commission process. You had an entirely different process. I don't know if that was approved, but my guess is that more likely, it's going, what was approved is what's on the plat and what's in the conditions. So can't argue that they should have done, you know, a better job, or better copies, or, but what we're saying is the planner should be involved, so that before anybody signs off on anything, it's like, you didn't see this, so we've got to go ahead and redo this. That didn't necessarily happen. So I guess we'll agree that, actually, I can't even agree, because I wasn't here, but it's being alleged there were things that were submitted late, or whatever. Different question than what decisions were made based on the record that exists.
Right.
It seemed like to bring this into compliance, based on what we've seen later, what we've seen in the past. Bring everything into compliance, and then we'll have to take the building type down. And I'm not sure that it's not twelve feet, because frequently asked questions, but fourteen feet might not be consistent with the code. So I think you probably address the in or out of the required yard, but it seems like it's required yard, no matter how you look at it, with all the evidence where front and back is. And I don't know any, any way to bring that, correct the situation out and bring it into compliance, except take the top down. I mean, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but I, my failure to do that, what is the other compliance?
I think that, I'll ask council to talk about what the city's-
So I think you probably address the in or out of the required yard, but it seems like it's required yard, no matter how you look at it, with all the evidence where front and back is. And I don't know any, any way to bring that, correct the situation out and bring it into compliance instead of take the top down. I mean, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but I, my failure to do that, what is the other compliance?
I think that, I'll ask council to talk about what the city's options are. But I think it's important that, again, we're looking at what the record that exists and the interpretations that were made. But Bill, we talked about this as a possibility, so.
Yeah, before we do go there, I do want to talk a little bit about the rear yard because the height limitation is based on the rear yard. And I think it's important to understand the rear yard, you know, as I said earlier, you look at, what does the code say? Then did the plan, does the plan development change that at all? The rear yard is defined in your code, and it says, "The rear yard means a yard between side lot lines and measured horizontally at right angles to the rear lot line." So that doesn't tell you too much unless you know what the side lot line and rear lot line is. Side lot line means for interior lots, a line separating one lot from the abutting lot or lots fronting on the same street. So, you know, not corner lots, this is what this is. So a side lot line is a line separating one lot from the abutting lots fronting on the same street. So if you were to, you know, based on the code, the, the front is to Ash Street. And so the rear lot line is to the east, side lot line to the north. Does anything in the plan development change that? And what it says is, "The main front entrance on Lot One shall face southerly." So it tells you where the entrances go. It doesn't tell you anything about where the different yards go. People do have entrances that don't face the street. And it then says, "The yard setbacks will be specified in Sheet C two point two," which is the envelopes that we've looked at before, "regardless of the orientation of the main front entrance or street or front, side or rear yards." So it doesn't reset any yard. So under your code, the rear yacht, rear yard is still to the east because that's how the side lot lines force it into there. So even though to the north, you know, you look at it, the house is required to face south, and it's got a larger lot, yard in, to the north, that's still considered a side yard under your code.
That's interesting.
So with that, I do want to follow up on what Bruce actually asked me, which is, you know, what is the council's options? And under your code on the plan development, you do have failure to comply with a final development plan, any condition of approval prescribed under the code, or to comply with a staged development schedule shall constitute a violation of this chapter. In this event, the city council may, after notice and hearing, revoke the planned development permit. So, you know, if in fact you believe that, if in fact there is a violation, you can notify the owner of the planned development, hold a hearing, and revoke the permit.
The permit for the.
For the planned development.
For the planned development.
I would expect that if you started heading down that path and the developer believed that there was going to be a revocation, that they may choose to take a different approach. If they thought that revocation was inappropriate, you know, any revocation can probably be challenged at Lubbock or circuit courts haven't done too much looking into where you would take that, but, you know, I would expect that it would continue on.
Also, I want to say that what we have is, excuse me, you have a report from staff that said, "This is how we made the decision." You might not agree with everything, we might not have made exactly the right choice all the way through, but you now have that information, you can make your judgment on it. You also have Jeff, for whom I have great respect, making counterpoints. They are different than what your staff and the attorney are saying. So while you have the ability to take that step, I would make it very carefully and probably recommend that you have a neutral party review anything that you might want to have checked if you are, if there's any consideration to go down that road.
Based on what Bill said, it sound like we'd have the ability to do that if we didn't conform with the plan development.
Correct.
Maybe we got the wool pulled over our eyes and didn't see those notes, but if we conformed with that and they're still, they're in compliance, and the city's granted permits based on that, I like the situation. I'm having a hard time seeing how we resolve this to bring it back into what compliance should have been, as the council perceived it, and it's a mess.
You know, the, over the years I've done this, it always seems like there are certain developments or applications that get tagged for whatever reason early on, and this seems like it was one of them for a variety of different reasons. You know, the question that I think you're facing is, yeah, this may not have been what you had thought was going to go up here. The question is whether it complies with a plan that was submitted, the plat that was approved, and the conditions of approval that were imposed on it. And, you know, staff, after looking at it, has concluded it does. And, you know, has said, "There are some steps we can take to avoid this in the future." And that's sort of where we are.
I think staff also concluded that the record is muddy, so it was not, it was our interpretation of things that said that this met the intent or met the requirements that were not necessarily the intent, but the conditions that exist.
And that leads me to say that we need to learn from this lesson and hopefully go through our codes and find those muddy spots and ferret them out and rewrite them as best we can. I don't know.
I still have three points to make if I could jump back in.
Okay.
I was kind of in the way when I was mid-point. And I also, I know you're trying to future, I'd like to see what happened.
Jeff, let me just stop you there because it would be better, I think, more efficient right now because we've got another big issue coming up.
How about quickly, these are points that haven't been brought up yet.
I know, but I think for our purposes, pass them on to staff because they're going to bring it back to us as far as details. Go ahead, I'm just trying to.
I'll be brief. One of the other critical conditions that wasn't met was number fifteen, clearly states the final geospatial board shall be prepared for each lot, part of the rural building permits. Despite this, we saw this building getting a pass, and I don't see any discretion there, so I'm not sure why the building was referred, geospatial report, not bad, and it was given a pass. Next point, quickly. Our code provides, those are part, minimum forty percent of the total area shall be devoted out of a living space. Of that, seventy-five percent of this shall become or shared. During phase three of the PUD approval, I remember Nicholson struggling to meet this number. He even had to put a driveway as out of a living space, which was lawful. When you remove the twenty-five thirty-five parking easement, does the map fail? Has anyone checked, reviewed, see that the PUD's in the plat, the bottom up to the living area? That's a big cut to take out, the number was already high. The last thing I want to kind of reiterate was, we've talked a lot about these, and I have now, it was in there, it slipped under your noses, but we got it done. What they didn't get done was the addition to the easement, this Exhibit Three. That wasn't done until over a year later. And that is where Nicholson tries to give the Hardings permission to build. Just go right around their code and say, "You can just do whatever I want you to build." That never came for anybody in the city. It's done well after the PUD's approved, which is not part of the final plat.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Bill, would you feel that because that action took place after approval, that that could be an issue that could open it up for us to question that particular area?
So as I understand that issue, and I don't have a great, you know, understanding of what that issue is, maybe I should discuss that further with Mr. Harrison, but, you know, the fact that the parking easement changed after the PD was approved, I don't think that necessarily changes things because if you look at the final plat that was adopted, it says future easement to be granted. So the expectation was that the easement would be granted in the, in the future.
Well, and would Nicholson have the authority at that point? Because wouldn't the other parcels, hadn't they been purchased at that point? So would he be the entity to approve?
So, you know, typically we don't get, you know, from the city's point of view, typically we don't review easements between property owners, various things. This is different because we've got a plan development that requires certain easements. The easement that, if I'm understanding it correctly, that was approved that he's pointing to came afterwards. The question is whether the easement changed anything or caused any different things. As I understand, the easement that was done in two thousand seventeen, it simply granted the Hardings the ability to use a parking easement that was called out on the plat. So I don't think that's a significant change, but I'll be the first to acknowledge, we got that yesterday. I'm not certain I fully understand what the issue is and would want to, you know, would reserve the right to come back with something different, but I, you know, my initial reaction is no.
Because in an HOA, once everyone owns the properties.
Right.
The authority goes away, and it's the homeowners that have authority at that point.
Right, and that's in a typical residential subdivision when you get a homeowner's association. And this functions in the same way. And most of those homeowner's associations, when the initial homeowner's agreement is entered into, the declarant, the person who's doing the original subdivision retains a lot of power to do various things. And, you know, that may be the case here, I just don't know.
Going from simply allowing, granting someone permission to park to, that's what was, that's what was approved, going from that to three years later, changing that to allowing a building, two-story, a hundred and sixty square foot, twenty-four foot tall building, that's a change. That's a significant change. And the U of code says, you know, seventeen forty-eighty, all significant changes, any changes from the final proof plan must go through the same process.
And Mayor, what my initial thought on that, again, not having too much time to think about it, is regardless of whether that easement was there or not, let's say there was no easement there, nothing changed or anything else, you could put a garage there, you know, it's a side yard, you could put the garage up. You know, the difference is that there was an easement that called it out of the parking easement, didn't talk at all about whether buildings could or couldn't be constructed. And then another easement comes back and says, "You can build a garage, you know, accessory structure consistent with city ordinances."
And I would question, you know, because the earlier easement that was granted in November of two thousand fifteen speaks about the parking easement going to Harding and what can go on that parking easement. It wasn't done in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen on what's been discussed.
Exhibit Three was done in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, if you look at Attachment Five.
Exhibit Three was the full of the big change. That was two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, but it was granted already in two thousand fifteen.
Not yet.
Yes, it is. It does. It says, just read Attachment Five.
Left, that's rare.
Yeah, sure.
I wasn't going to wrap up on that till after. What we seem to be seeing these days is approval by admission. If it doesn't specifically say that our code, you don't know where to go. Thinking that's a big change for the stewardship that's kept, can be special, then it's dangerous. Of course, our code doesn't cover everything, no city's code can. Maybe ours is a little more loose, maybe even more down home than it's mother, but that doesn't mean we have to allow anyone to build a theme park in your backyard just because it says you can't, our code. Lubbock, as I've learned, gives you a lot of comforts, contripper, please respect it more, go without people who do it. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
They say you have to sign in.
I did.
Okay.
Lisa Kerr, Post Office Box Ninety-Four, Canterbury, Oregon, proceeding as a citizen of Canterbury, Oregon. It'll take less than thirty seconds. Pursuing to my understanding of easements, the granting of easement does not relieve either party, either the grantee or the grantor, of the requirements of the code related to the set-up and set-up structure. That, I've just been reading about easements actually for something else, and that is my understanding of easements. The other thing I'd like to say is that, obviously, I think we all know that we've had the wool pulled over our eyes yet again by Mr. Nicholson. This has been happening over and over again. It's not okay. Books, books is not okay. I think that we have to, it's not all right to sneak something through. I can assure you, if the planning commission had been aware of this easement, there would have been some discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Any final comments?
I have a question. We've given you the report that you asked for. There's been a lot of discussion about whether or not there were misinterpretations, whether or not anything that occurred was to the level that the city might want to take action to review the permit, whether or not it was more, I'm trying to not use the word egregious, but if it was more than what the level should be before, it should have to come back. That is your call to make, and so I wanted to ask you if you have any information that you require, if you're still considering that, to let us know because I think it should be, you know, finding space. And so I think that you have some information from us, you have comments that have been made from, you know, a private citizen who also happens to be on the planning commission, and then, and also Jeff Harrison. So I don't want to leave it that we didn't do something to follow up. So there's two ways. One is if you want us to do more, you'll let us know. Or two, you're leaning towards trying to make a decision on potentially moving forward with something, and so let us know what it is that you want so that we can get you the information you need. And this is not a, you have to tell me right now, but it's, I want you to know, and also so that everybody else can know. You know, is something going to happen with this? Is it, you know, that sort of thing.
I can say right off the bat, and this is not specific to this problem, but it is, take Jeff's comments and look at where the codes did not decipher well, so that we can fix those for future problems. That's, that's an easy answer. The hard answer is what to do with this problem. I don't know yet. I'll have to think about that one a little bit.
How can you assure that this will not be habitable? Or that people will be living in it? How can you?
Code enforcement. That's, that's all I can.
That's all we got.
That's what we rely on.
I would definitely require that that be taken care of.
I think the last time they were in there, certain things had been taken out that would have made it, including the stairs to the second floor. Weren't they taken out?
Sure, yeah. They've, they've got final approval, and so we will be, just like you said, you'll be watching, we'll be watching, so code enforcement will keep an eye on that, as in other areas of town where we get reports on living.
What's to keep them after all this blows over?
What's to keep them, after all this blows over, what's to keep them from adding stairs and a kitchen and going at it?
Do you have that with anybody?
Anyplace, sorry.
And what would happen is that, I mean, we aren't gonna go into a, say, we're gonna go and keep checking Bruce's house. But if somebody was to report that I was doing something illegally, that would trigger a code enforcement action. And this particular place, it, it can't be a, well, I didn't know, because it was started down one road, and we said, no, that's, that wasn't appropriate on us, but we took all that stuff back. So, it can't be somebody saying, I didn't know. It's, there would have to be actions taken that were knowingly against the permit, because the permit was reduced as a result of action that we took. So, I think that this one already has a higher notice threshold than what most people have. But it'll probably be somebody calling and letting us know, and then we would follow up.
And what will be the ramification of that?
I think it depends on what, you know, what we find. Jeff, do you have a better handle as far as, I mean?
I, I don't know what our, I could, I can look into what our code states or the, but I'm sure it's the, at the very least, the $500 a day misdemeanor touchdown. But, you know, we can get back on to what, what's allowable under the code. I know that I've been, I've worked in jurisdictions where we made them take out kitchens and things like that, or, you know, like you said, if they put in the stairs, we'll take it out.
Can you make them reduce the height of the building?
Well, we, we have, like I said, as far as that goes, we have no limitation on how high an accessory structure, unless you are holding it to a required yard standard. And even there, you can get special, you know, through a development permit process, special provisions to go higher. So, no, we don't, we don't have anything that, you know, like I said, if you write the next plan development, you can limit it to 12 or 14 or whatever you want. But in this one, that was not a stated case within the condition or anything. And, but it is definitely something that we can look at when we do our accessory dwelling unit plan, you know, when it goes before a amendment process.
We've had so much trouble with this unit development, and I think I heard Bruce say, or Jeff, I can't recall if it was you, that we will never have another one.
I said that.
I think that was Jeff's opinion because of all the problems they had. I think that as long as it's in the code, people can still apply. I think if we did it, we would have a much closer process and conditions associated with it. But, but I think that was more of an emotional reaction, it's like-
Well, it's so loosey-goosey what you can do in there that I think we shouldn't.
Certainly delete the plan development section.
Yes.
I know if we get to the code review, I'm gonna propose eliminating that, so.
You wouldn't be the first jurisdiction.
Yeah. Just pointed out, when this thing started, the planning commission rejected the, the plan development. And I think it would be manless. There was appeal to the council. Not this council, two members of this council. And one member of this council that was on the council end was the only dissenting vote. And still looking at Bill, I wish I'd been more persuasive than you had, and we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it tonight. It was, it was, even the language we have, that was so clear that this did not comply or qualify as a plan development. But, I mean, we got turned around on that, and now we're just exactly where they say. I told you so, but I told you so.
And we won't even go into the living wall question tonight.
Okay, with that, can we move on? Okay. Next item. Water meter loan discussion, Bruce.
Yeah, Karen, are you ready to talk about the water loan?
Essentially.
The water loan item.
Will you speak to that?
Yes. Want to go?
So, the, basically, your city budgeted several capital projects, or identified that prior to projects, were actually submitted for loan, or just rep loans. And this particular project, we got our acceptance letter, and the contract, it's a remedy that was basically outlining the conditions of our drawdowns for that loan. And we can prove for a total amount of $624,150, 322 of that is a forgiven loan at a hundred percent rate over 30 years. And we replace our meter modules that we talked about in several part meetings previously. But most of those meters, the modules are approaching their critical life cycle, so. Before you get to this evening is the loan document and the signature card associated with the contract of the loan document.
Okay, you have any questions for Karen?
We need more of these.
Sorry.
We need more of these.
More of these?
More of these loans.
Hopefully, we have two more coming.
Have we decided if we're gonna do this in staff or contract it out?
We have not made that honest decision. We have a plan in-house, and we also have a plan and a whole, from an external contractor. And Bruce and I are just eager to get together and review that and see which way is the best way to go.
Okay.
If you do it in-house, it'd be probably stretched out over a longer period of time. Do it when you can.
It would.
Have a contractor that get in it, you know.
The advantages of us doing in-house is it gives us the chance to touch every single meter, and also do maintenance of vegetation around our meters and such when they go to each and every location. There are some lid improvements that we want to do associated with the change out that the contractor wouldn't be able to do. It has to do with how the meter reads, how the module reads. Doing it externally, it would definitely be faster. They do everything at once, but staff would most likely have to go back and retouch each of those locations for maintenance that the contractor couldn't do. So, that's what we need to talk about, including for speed, or we looking for overall volume, doing everything we'd like to do when we do this project.
There's, there is an advantage to contracting, and that's that we're in a better position to recover labor costs. I'm not sure if we did it in-house, if we would be able to recover our labor cost. But we could definitely cover the material. So, that's a def, a big consideration.
Anyone else? I believe you've told us already, Karen, but if you could refresh, at least my memory, how we'll pay back the $302,000?
I can, I can cover that, yes. We already have debt service in the budget for this year. It comes out to about $54,000 a year to pay back the, the, actually, for a million dollars. We're down to $300 and something thousand dollars that we would actually be repaying. So, the $54,000 we have, we are, we are going to, are going to need $11,000 of that, and it's already budgeted.
Okay.
The next item, we're gonna be talking about some of the other implications.
And just refresh my memory a little bit more. I believe that's what we discussed this past summer with, when we passed the budget, because this, this did come up.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm, I'm rec, recalling a little more of it.
Okay, and then, but as we start doing more projects, if we use this, or any loan source, we would be adjusting that every budget year.
Great.
Depending on what the work is, what we do.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Bruce.
Okay, and we'll be bringing this ordinance, or this agreement to you in February.
Okay.
Okay.
That one was easy. Last item, utility works effort rates, Bruce.
Yes, sir, we talked, we had a, what's called the big-ticket item meeting, where we talked about some things we have coming up. And there was, there was a new subject introduced, which was the water supply resiliency. It was something we talked about during the budget process, it was something which we budgeted. And so, we are in the process of pulling together preliminary information for what it might cost to go ahead and implement those projects. But at some point, we have to make a decision if we're going to do those projects or not, else we don't have to worry about the financing. So, I think, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but I think that at some point, we have to say, yes, this is our intent, is to go ahead and move forward with those. And then, as far as talking about how we pay for the things, I think that we have, I think that you all agree that we have a pretty strong committee for the vetting committee. What my recommendation is, is that you appoint a, another committee, but of people that have a strong financing background, that can review the options, because we're gonna have more, you know, different loan sources, those kind of things. Just to come back to the council and say, these are the ways that you might be able to pay for it. And then, I think that when we get to, suppose we're selecting whatever, if it's gonna be a combination of water rates and tax rates, then we would go through the process of trying to vet it through, you know, a group of people that have a vested interest in that. But for, for right now, my recommendation is that you appoint some folks to review the material, to look at options that can advise you on, this is probably, you know, the best way long-term from the cost, this is the least impact on residents, you know, whatever the, the criteria is that they come up with. But I don't think we're at the point yet to focus on, you know, one particular methodology. But we do need-
Would your budget, can any be able to do that for you?
Possibly, but it would, I guess it would be a subgroup of the budget committee, because you're the budget committee also. So, if you're gonna have them come back to you, you might wanna say that, you know, just the other people besides you would be appointed to this committee. Or if you know anybody beyond that that would have that kind of a background. Because I really, I think we've got some good options, but I would love the help of some local experts. And we also have our financial advisor that we, you know, pulled in early on. And so, I think that they would be very valuable in providing current rates, calculations, those kind of things. Because like, if you ask them for a certain, a certain type of project, a certain type of bond, they can go ahead and tell you what your current rate is and what the cost might be for debt service, everything else. So, I think that that's something we, it would make sense for us to contract to do those calculations and be current on what the rates are for municipalities.
Are you, are you thinking about people with backgrounds in public finance who may know what's available through the state for various options, or through private lending institutions? Those kinds of, that kind of background?
I guess what I'm thinking is that people are used to dealing with, you know, large money projects. And so, they already know the terminology of those things. I think that we can bring them information as far as, you know, public financing, but somebody that would already understand when we start talking about public financing terms, to say that this would work, this would work. So, and I, again, my, my thought is that this would deal primarily with the financing side, to come back for the, the different methodologies. There will probably be subsequent discussions that would occur after that.
I would like to see at some point a presentation. I know you've done some presentation already on what is meant by utility resiliency kind of projects. But I'm thinking something more along the lines that we can, that I can then take to the public when they talk to me about it, and have some graphics and, you know, stuff like that, just to make it a little more clear for my-
We, we should have a few. We anticipate getting the initial report by the end of February. And so, it was our intent to put that on the, the March workshop.
Okay, cool.
So, we need to, to keep that moving, so yes, it's our intent.
Okay.
And we don't need an answer tonight, but it's just that, I think that the next, well, there's two sets. One, should we do it? And I think that we need to see that, at least that initial presentation. And then, the other is, how do we pay for it? And that's where I would recommend the committee.
I like Robin's idea of the budget committee, that's a, an already put-together group. And we might ask them, just to see if they would be considerate. And then, there's five of them, five or six.
And I'm not definitely real in their background, they certainly understand our budgeting process. Well, first, they're, as far as experience in big-ticket, major financing, I think we, there were several on that. I think there are a couple. Like I said, pull out a subcommittee, not the full budget committee, you can maybe include all this as well.
Yeah, we couldn't do it.
And you have, you have Carolyn Probst and Jim Azamano, those are excellent choice. Those are very strong characters that are on the budget committee.
And Dip too, Richard, I think is pretty knowledgeable about that. And is it Phyllis? Phyllis is-
Phyllis is on it, yeah. And I'm not, I don't know if anybody's background, but I do know the background of those two, so that, that would be a good start.
But they, they would also be the kinds of folks that would give you the answer to the questions you're looking for, I think. And you could always, we could always add in a couple more if we felt like we needed to.
I guess the one thing that I'm a little concerned about is if we're bringing them information on financing, and then they, they work it all out, that's fine. But they're not, our knowledge then is limited to what you can bring in. I would hope that there might be somebody else that we could work with too that would be available, would be able to tell us what is out there that we may not be knowledgeable about, and that we could expand our boundaries in knowing what is out there to be used.
And I would suggest that our financial advisor, who is dealing with all types of project financing in the public sector, could definitely, you know, come and speak and be an advisor.
Okay.
No decisions required now, that's just the thought.
I've done this for the rest of the night, anybody else out there have comments? Carolyn's smiling.
Carolyn, Carolyn knows she just got roped into another project.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jason?
Ma'am.
Have we had anybody get a ticket for talking on their cell phone?
Yes.
And could you please tell everybody here what the penalty is for that?
I believe it's $320-something dollars. Yes.
Okay, 'cause, and that's even if you're touching the phone in your car.
Yeah, it changed January 1, where you can't be touching it.
Yeah, so that's pretty scary.
For those who have phones.
Yeah.
Well, now, if you pull over and park somewhere, can you do, you can use it?
Only if you're calling me.
But not at a stoplight, right?
Correct.
No.
And we've had that too, where people, oh, stopped at the stoplight.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming we just shifted to go to the order.
Yes, sorry.
Thought you meant you had a question about what we were talking about. Thought you meant you had a question about what we were talking about.
Yeah, no.
Okay, anybody else, anything else for good of the order?
Oh, yeah. Next Monday would be our coffee with the councilors. However, it is a holiday and the city hall's closed, and for some reason, I'm sure Bruce and Colleen probably don't want to come in, and we don't want to pay overtime for them to come in to-
Overtime.
Staff.
It is overtime.
Yeah.
To staff our coffee with the councilors. So we are hoping to be able to do, to do that on the fourth Monday this month, and if Robin is not available, she's not sure, she hasn't looked at her calendar, but she may not be available, then if one of my fellow city councilors wants to come in to substitute for Robin, that would be welcome, so. Colleen?
You wanted that for January and February?
Yeah, because February, there's a, the third Monday is, in February is also a holiday, so the fourth Monday of January and the fourth Monday of February.
And then back to third, for March, you'd be back to the third.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I know there's some folks here that came to specifically to talk about the potential service tax. That will come, there will be a time when we talk about it. Right now, obviously, we've got to figure out what we're going to buy, what we're going to spend money on, and then we'll have several options. So that's just one option to add to the mix. So, thank you. We are adjourned. Good night.